Of November 27th Board Meeting to order, all members are present. And please note that Mr. DePalmer is joining us remotely tonight. He's asked me to stand in for him this evening as Chair. So you're stuck with me for one night only. I hope that's okay. Mr. DePalmer, can you hear us okay?
Oh, he's on mute. You're on mute, Gary.
About now.
Good.
Good evening, Mr. DePalmer. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. And so we have just adjourned an executive session to go over a set, two sets of minutes. Would everybody be so kind as to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Once again, good evening. I hope everyone here had a wonderful Thanksgiving. First up, we have transmitting of Treasury warrants. We will take this by roll call since Mr. DePalmer is with us remote. Our votes this evening will be taken by roll call. First up is transmending of Treasury warrants, numbers 2420, 2420W, 2420T, 2421, 2421W, 2421T, and 2421S. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion's made by Mr. West. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Seconded by Mrs. Moselli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
Excuse me. Point of order. I think it would be fitting in accordance with the law. To identify the amounts of each warrant, if I could point out that at town meeting, when there's an article that comes before the town meeting, that's a financial article, they always identify the amount of money that's being voted on. So could you give us the amounts of each warrant tonight, please?
Your point of order has been noted. Thank you. Is there discussion under the motion? Hearing none. We'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Kevin Kyra, yes?
Lilly Moselli, yes.
Frank West, yes?
Gary DePalma, yes?
And Greg Bendel, yes. It is unanimous. Next up, item number three is the approval of minutes from October 30th, 2023. And would anybody like to offer a motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes of October 30th, 2023. With a thank you to Bev for revising that section.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded.
The motion has been made by Mr. Kyra, seconded by Mrs. Moselli, and supported by Mr. DePalmer. We'll go with a roll call vote if there isn't any discussion.
Frank West, yes?
Lilly Moselli, yes.
Kevin Kyra, yes?
Gary DePalma, yes?
And Greg Bendel, yes. It's unanimous. All right. Yep, gotcha. With that, we are upon our first appointment this evening, 7:00, with Ms. Karen Rassus, our principal assessor. She's joined by Mr. Brian Perry this evening. Welcome to both of you. Good evening. For those of you who do not know, this will be a public hearing, which will open in just a moment, for the discussion of local property tax policy in reference to classification. Those of you who have seen this as an annual event, that we welcome Karen here. She always gives us a very informative presentation. I expect nothing less this evening, I'm sure. And so we will be having questions from the board and the audience once the public hearing is open. Good evening to both of you.
Thank you.
And could we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion over the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Kevin Kyra, yes?
Lilly Moselli, yes.
Frank West, yes?
Gary DePalma, yes?
And Greg Bendel, yes. The public hearing is now open at 7:04 PM for the discussion of local property tax policy in reference to classification. Good evening again. Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Bendel, or Acting Chairman Bendel, Board of Selectmen, and Acting Chair, Acting Town Manager.
That's a lot.
Thank you. Thank you again. So the packets that you had received from the Board of Assessors, I'd like to go through those this evening with you. It's probably easiest if I were able to read the cover letter. This will be first page in your, first page in your packet. And this is from the Board of Assessors. "We're here this evening in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, to present information to the Board of Selectmen so that they may determine the percentages of the tax levy to be paid by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year '24. The selectmen must vote a residential factor, which will determine the percentage of tax levy to be allocated and paid by the residential property owners. After careful analysis and review, the Board of Assessors determined to the Board of Selectmen it is a classification of 175%, which would result in a minimum residential factor of .762331 for fiscal year '24. This shift conforms to the guidelines of Prop. 2.5 and is consistent with prior year's tax policies by the Board. Adoption of this recommendation allows the town to assess and collect an equitable amount of taxes from the residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property sectors. This year was not a recertification year, however, assessments were updated to meet the Commissioner of Revenue's standards and have received approval by the Department of Revenue. The proposed assessed values were established by analyzing calendar year 2022 sales and the income data as of, and sales and income data as of 1/123 as an assessment date. Our analysis resulted in an average single-family residential property value increase of approximately 10.1%, while the average commercial-industrial value increased approximately 6.1% and the average, I'm sorry, average commercial 6.1% and the average industrial 9.5%. These average tax calculations are offered simply as a guideline. Individual assessed values may increase more or less than the imputed average. So traditionally, the Board of Selectmen have shifted the maximum allowable to the commercial-industrial and personal property class, and that is the recommendation of the Board of Assessors this evening. The Board of Assessors continues its mission to provide the most fair and uniform assessments and tax policies to the taxpayers of Wilmington and respectfully submits this recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. So to give you a little overview of what's happened with the values this year, the residential class has increased by 1.1016%. And the residential class does include things like apartment buildings as well, so 635 Main Street, that became 100% complete this year. Also condos, so all of our condo activity, the new growth on 168 Lowell Street is included in that increase as well as increases due to market activity. The same with commercial. That increased from $212 million to $225 million. That's a 1.6% increase. Our industrial property increased by 1.09%, almost 9.5%. And that's also due to some of the larger industrial buildings that have been being built around town. They are not assessed at 100% complete yet. Our assessment date's June 30th. I'm not sure if you've driven around town, but 38 Upton Drive, we have some very large industrial buildings that were built there. I think everyone's seen on 129 Lowell Street, the large building that's replaced the Textron Building. So the percent complete as of the assessment date, those values are in that industrial value increase as well. And personal property increased from 205 million to 255 million, which is a $50 million increase. I can rest assured that not all properties went up 124% on personal property. What has driven most of that is, we have one taxpayer in town that is a robotics company, and their value increased over $39 million in value. We also, the other, a large portion of the increase was from our public utilities, which was like $7.3 million. So we have a total real and personal property value this year of $6.9 billion. As you can see by the pie chart below, this is still a predominantly residential community and making up 5.2 billion of the property value. So the residential class at the 5.2 billion makes up 75.9364% of the tax levy. But if you were to shift and vote the 175%, they would end up paying 57.8887% of the tax levy. The commercial-industrial personal property class, they make up 24.0636%. But if you shifted to the 175%, they would end up paying 42.1113% of the tax levy. That percent is increased a little bit from last year. And I'll get into that on another slide. This slide here is to offer some information to you with what the implication is based upon what residential factor you pick and what percentage shift the town adopts. So as this chart, if we start at the top and you did not choose to shift and have a split tax rate this year, there would be a single tax rate of $14.99, but that would result in an average increase to the average single-family value of $2,821.80, whereas the commercial-industrial value would, tax bill would decrease by $30,119. If you chose to go to 150% shift, the average residential tax bill would increase $1,201, and the average commercial-industrial value would decrease $7,646. You can shift any percent up to the 175. I did this in groups of 10 here, so the 160%, as you can see from the chart, the average increase to the residential value would be $873, and it would be a decrease of $3,152 to the commercial-industrial properties. If you 170% shift, would result in a $551 increase to the average residential value bill, and the average commercial-industrial would increase by $1,342. However, if you shifted 175% by adopting a residential factor of .762331, then the residential resulting tax rate would be $11.43, and the commercial tax rate would be $26.23. The average residential tax bill increase would be $387.51, and the average commercial-industrial tax bill would increase by $3,559.99. They, although the tax rates have decreased, the average tax bill has increased, so just to recognize that is, it's a formula. Recognizing also that the average single-family value this year increased the 10%, so last year it was $622,128. This year it was $683,790. If we applied the $1.43 tax rate, the average bill would be $7,815.72. The average commercial value last year was 2,000, I'm sorry, $2,744,558. And the average commercial value this year is $2,996,424. Their resulting tax rates, taxes would be $78,596 versus last year's $75,036. So their average increase is the $3,559.99. I'd like to also point out that we do a comparison, at least over the last four or five years, and compared if someone was to move to the area and they were going to look in Middlesex or Essex County, that's 89 communities to choose from. Wilmington has ranked roughly at the same area in the past, for the past three years, we were ranked about number 33 from the bottom of having the lowest average tax bill. This year, we dropped to number 31, so we're a little bit lower. And obviously, giving just a range for that rank, out of all Middlesex and Essex, Lawrence was the lowest average bill with a value of $3,813, and Weston would be the highest average bill of $23,893. We have seen a large increase in, values have still been strong, with the 10% increase last year was a 14% increase. This, these values are based on calendar year 2022 sales, so interest rates started going up in the fall, so we didn't really see the impact as much on this analysis as you might be seeing in the '23 activity. And it's with an assessment date as of January 1, 2023. We found it very interesting that this year, over 28 sales were over $1 million. So I know a few years back, I had asked one of the builders, "Why don't you build a different style house?" What are they like? "Because it won't sell in Wilmington for $1 million." And we've had, we have over 50 houses valued at 1.2 million or higher. So up actually 1.2 to 1.9 million is over 50 properties now. So the sales have been strong in that category. We've also had some strong commercial sales. We've had three office buildings on Ballardville Street. They were 16.5 million to $17 million. Just to give you some estimates, I know people have asked about sales activity on Salem Street and the 175 Lowell Street, so the Textron Building and then the Sand and Gravel location. So there was a $35 million sale on the 800 Salem Street property. However, the seller had to dismantle all of the equipment and pay for the cost of leveling out that location, whereas on 175 Lowell Street, the $16 million sale, the buyer was responsible for those costs. So trying to, don't expect to look up an assessment and see that it's $35 million because there's research done to verify more detail to the sale. So this here shows you the average assessed value in the history from 2002 to current. So it gave you a 22-year look at what's happened. So when people say, "Do you ever lower the value?", and the answer is yes, because we have to follow the market. Assessed value should equal market value. So when values are up, the assessments have to be up to be in compliance. When they're dropped, we do lower the values. You can see in fiscal year 2009, when the economy turned, the average assessed value went from 402 down to 381. And then it actually, the lowest went down in 2013 to the 349, and it started inching its way back up. Last year, we saw a 14% increase in values. This year, a 10% increase in values. And this here is, kind of gives you a graphic view. Sometimes, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words. You can kind of see what's happened. And we have been saying, you know, market goes up, the market comes down, and how long are we going to be on the upward swing? You can tell we've had our dips, but I'm not an economist, however, interest rates, everybody's trying to balance things out, and we are, based on the '22 sales, Wilmington's assessments were still increasing. The next page is to give you a little bit of a history from 2004 to current, as what we have done with shifting the tax rate, and you can see how this has kind of gone back and forth between residential and commercial. The boards always voted the 175, except down in fiscal 2004. You can see it was 200% that was shifted to the commercial class. That was because there was special legislation then to allow cities and towns that had shifted to the 175 to go to 200, because what was happening is the commercial-industrial values were dropping or not increasing as much as residential. So it was changing the burden. And you can see that more, the residential taxpayer kept picking up more of the levy and their percentage share. So they came out with a legislation to help ease that, but we have always voted the 175. This year, the residential assessed values, as we pointed out earlier, make up 75.9364%. And the commercial-industrial personal class makes up 24.0636. But if we do shift to the 175%, the residential levy share would be 57.8887%, and the commercial-industrial personal would be 42.1113%. So that would be the results of 175% shift. And you can see, because there was such an increase in the commercial-industrial and personal class this year, that the residential share has gone down from last year being the 58.136%. The Board of Assessors would also like to inform the Board that the fiscal year '24 excess levy capacity is approximately $1,387,951, and this is due to the fact that our new growth was much higher than expected at 3.5 million. Most of that was from the personal property industrial classes. Again, I had mentioned, we had a robotics company that we had an additional $39 million in value. So the growth of just that one account is over $1 million. That was added to the new growth, and the large industrial warehouses on Upton Drive and Lowell Street have also contributed to that. Actually, the residential values and growth was only about $470,000. So the next options to discuss are residential exemption, which has not been adopted by the town of Wilmington. It's truly meant for more of those communities that are second home communities with a lot of property rentals to give the year-round people some kind of a tax break, or places like Somerville that have many, three families, two families, and that they're not owner-occupied. So that's not really applicable in Wilmington, so it's not something we've adopted. There's a small commercial exemption, and there's only 14 communities in the state of Massachusetts that have adopted it. It's for properties that have a value less than $1 million and less than 10 employees. If it's a shopping center that's less than $1 million, each business in the shopping center has to have less than the 10 employees. We've not adopted something like that because it wasn't, there really wasn't beneficial to the town of Wilmington. The open space discount is also, land which is not otherwise classified and which is not taxable under the provisions of Chapter 61, 61A or 61B, are taxable as a permanent conservation restriction. The chapter lands are open space, recreational, agricultural, and forest land. It's so, it would have to be land that was held not for the production of income, but to maintain in its open natural condition, which contributes significantly to the benefit and enjoyment of the public. We don't have any land classified as open space in that category in Wilmington. So the Wilmington Board of Selectmen need to vote a residential factor this evening in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, which will determine the percentage of the tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property. So if the Board votes the fiscal year '24 residential factor of .762331 with a resulting shift of 175%, this would be the most favorable scenario for the residential taxpayer, and that's been traditionally, that has been traditionally what the Board has done in the recommendation of the Board of Assessors this evening. I just also wanted to mention that the tax rates that were presented this evening are estimates, and they do pen certification from the Department of Revenue based upon your vote this evening, and once we submit the documentation to them. Would that entertain any questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate that certainly a lot.
I'm trying to go fast forward and not bore you too much.
I can, I appreciate it. I think I've told you this in the past. This is one of those meetings that I tend to have to go back and watch online, and watch the replay, just so that I can, you know, digest everything. And you could imagine how often we get stopped in the grocery store and throughout the community to ask about taxes.
Absolutely.
Some of the questions, I'm sure we have ourselves about the tax rate, and so this is one that I always point to in the catalog of videos that's worth watching for sure. If it's okay with you, I'd like to open it up to the Board for questions, comments, and then to the community, if you don't mind answering some. And Brian, Director of Finance, thanks so much for being here as well.
Thank you.
Anybody have a question or comment up here? Mr. West?
Yes. First of all, great presentation. It was mind-boggling to an extent because there's all sorts of numbers rattling around and all that, but the end game sounds like it makes sense. All right, the end game says that we're looking to approve the tax, the same type of tax structure that we've approved for many years, so it kind of makes sense on that end. I do have a question on the small commercial exemption. Now, you're saying that it's not adopted by the town, because there are buildings in town that you do have small, you know, small mom-and-pop type businesses that do have, you know, commercial activity. So what is, could you go into a little bit more detail on what that is and what it would take to get adopted if it's beneficial to be adopted?
Sure. So what ends up happening is the values have to be less than $1 million. And in looking at that, there's probably approximately like 125, 130 commercial properties that would qualify for that. About 111 of those are the commercial or industrial condos, so like a lot of the commercial garages that, like 200 Andover Street, Ford Jewel Drive, 190 Rear Main Street, those have a value less than $1 million. I don't know how many employees they have, so they'd have to have less than 10 employees. An example of like Wilmington House of Pizza, the value's less than $1 million. However, if they have more than 10 employees, you don't qualify. So it doesn't mean that everyone whose value is less than $1 million would qualify. And again, if they did, they have to have less than 10 employees, and then there's a different commercial tax rate. And then the commercial-industrial values greater than that absorb the difference. So the town doesn't gain any more money or lose money. It's just a matter of who pays a different portion of the pie, so to speak.
So would that be, so what you're saying, it sounds like what you're saying is that a particular business owner would go to you and make application, and then based on your criteria, or the state's criteria, they may or may not be eligible for some sort of a tax break?
Right, right, yep.
Okay. So it's nothing we've, is this, it's not a board vote or anything like that?
The Board could vote that, and you could have, you know, I'm assuming that you'd want to have more information about that, but what I can tell you generally is there would be less than 125 properties that would qualify as far as value goes. But I didn't do, there's not the correlation with the number of employees to know out of that if people would qualify. And it's a, I think it's only like a 10% value reduction.
Okay, thank you.
And just to follow up on Mr. West's question, you mentioned that if there's a tax exemption for a particular piece of property, then the other commercial properties have to make up that difference?
Yes.
So they're still on the, they've been on the hook for paying for someone's exemption?
Yes. So if you have a property, two properties very similar next to each other, and one's $1 million, $1.50, and one's $995, this guy is going to pick up the tax burden that this one, the tax break that this person received. Yes.
And just a curiosity question, I guess, on the single, on the average single-family analysis that you have here?
Yes.
I appreciate the 2009 comparison, how 2008 was 400, 2000, and then in '09 it went to 381, and then, you know, 356, 357 started going up. But then I go up to 2022, and I see that it's, the average tax bill was, increase was $64. How did that fit in there when everything is still going up?
Well, the interesting thing, there's, it's multifaceted usually, right? So I can't speak to exactly, I don't, I'd have to look back to see what the new growth was that year, but the growth, the levy might have not gone up as much. I can tell you that the shift from looking at the other pages went down, so the average residential value only went up 5%, but there was more commercial value that was brought on. So the residential shift in the previous year was 59.02%, and then it went down to 57.4%. So just in the shift alone would have caused the residential taxes to have gone down because the commercial class picked up more of the burden.
I like that one, by the way.
I know. But you know what? The year I presented that, nobody seemed too excited about it. I'm like, wait, it was only $64, and nobody's like excited.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. Any other questions or comments from the Board? Okay. This is a public hearing, so at this time, if anybody from the audience has a question specific to this appointment, just please come to the microphone if you can state your name and address, and if you could direct all questions through the Chair, that would be wonderful. Evening.
Our assessor mentioned that-
Excuse me, sir, if you could just state your name and address, please, for the record.
I think I'd like to remain anonymous tonight. And just put folk-
And just put folks on notice that I've been getting some bottles thrown on my driveway and broken up. So, that's the reasoning for that, Mr. Bendel. I'm sure you are. Our assessor mentioned that, correct me if I'm wrong, but the valuation of the properties in town are just shy of $7 billion. And I was just wondering through you, Mr. Bendel, if we can just get an answer as to how much revenue that would generate into the town in a dollar amount?
So, Karen, I would just offer to you that if you have an answer or if you need more time, is it something we need to get back to the gentleman on?
So, the formula, it's pretty much a formula. So, whatever the tax dollar, whatever the value is and whatever the levy is, it's really math. So, this amount of value is generating 105, one second, I can tell you. Let's see, the 105. 104,044,768 is the tax lev, that's the tax levy that this amount of money is, this amount of value is generating.
Okay, so our budget for this fiscal year was over $129 million. So, that leaves us roughly $25 million that is over the amount of money that this valuation and tax rate would generate. And I was wondering if somebody could provide the community with an answer as to where that money would be coming from?
Through you, Chair. So, the estimated receipts from the cherry sheets from the state and other estimated receipts, motor vehicle excise, investment income, things like that is what makes up the gap. This is the tax levy, then there's the budget, but the other receipts come from different places. Licensing and permit fees, but majority of it, like Chapter 70 money, monies from the state.
And would you have that amount handy tonight that you could tell us how much the cherry sheet, the register receipts, and any other receipts would total out to be? Or actually, if you don't have the exact amount tonight, if you might have it for last year or if you do have it for this year, that'd be helpful.
Certainly understandable if you don't have it tonight, but-
So, let me just think of this. So, I don't have the tax recap sheet. It is public record. It is on the Division of Local Services website, so all the information is there. The cherry sheets are public record and that's on the state's website as well. All 351 cities and towns receipts as well as estimates are on there, or charges.
Great resource.
Yes, please. The, excuse me, the town website does also include the FY '24 budget as proposed. That includes the budgeted revenue from these sources. It's on the website. Again, those are budgeted figures. They're not the actuals as those are to be determined throughout the year.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that the town has, I believe it's over $39 million in free cash. Is that correct? I think at the Town Managers Search Committee, that number was given out.
That was the FY '22 figure, the FY '23, I'm sorry, the figure from last year. It has not been certified yet this year.
Okay, so now, when money is put into free cash, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was reported by our previous town manager that each year when the town goes before town meeting with a budget and the actual amount is less than what is budgeted, that amount of money goes into free cash. Is that correct?
That's not quite correct and I feel like we are getting a little bit off track here from the classification hearing. The tax, the free cash is certified by the DUI or not strictly a matter of the budgetary.
I agree. And if there is an objection from the board, I think we need to stick to our schedule. We do have another public hearing and a full agenda.
Okay, just had one last comment.
Sir, I would just suggest to you that a lot of these questions, I think they've done a nice job answering and I would also mention that they're available Monday through Friday and that their offices would be more than welcome to answer some of these questions.
But you're also ready to take a vote. You're ready to take a vote.
No, we're not going to take the vote yet. We haven't closed the public hearing just yet.
Okay, I just was wondering if we can just have our assessor weigh in on the fact that across our country, there's what's referred to as a means-based tax and I was wondering if you could speak to us about the means-based tax movement?
Karen, are you able to answer that final question?
Again, I think I concur with Brian that it's not necessarily relevant to the percentage shift that we're going to adopt. There is, I'm not familiar with around the country, a means-based, generally speaking, is to give a particular value class some type of a discount and have the higher-class properties pick up that difference. So, you push the burden on to a different class of people as opposed to having it spread out the way that is. It's kind, we, in the town of Wilmington, we have elderly exemptions, veterans exemptions, blind exemptions, Clause 22 exemptions. So, we have tax deferral options for taxpayers as well. So, it's not like we don't offer anything and we did go to town meeting and adopt some higher levels for those, for income and asset levels, as well as we adopted some other legislation that was local option for our veterans to be able to, when properties are in a trust, to not have to be the trustee so that they would also still be able to get their exemption. So, we have done, we have addressed some of those exemptions and tried to make it more beneficial for people by increasing it by the Consumer Price Index, et cetera.
Great, thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? Ma'am, please. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Karen West, to Birchwood Road. I just have a real quick question.
Please.
Yes. When you were talking about the residential exemption, the small commercial exemption and the open space discount that said are not adopted by the town, if someone wanted to look into that, would that be, would that require the board to adopt it into the town or does it just mean that no one's take, no one's tried to get it before?
The board could, someone could request that of the board. We could do further detail and the board can take that opt, can take a vote to do that once you have, I would say, once you have the information to do that. The residential exemption in a town like Wilmington isn't really applicable because we don't have that many secondary homes. So, and you don't have several owner-occupied homes. We have over 7,000 single-family homes and people would have to prove their residency in order to do that. So, that would also entail a substantial amount of burden on the assessor's office with applications to try to process over 7,000 applications of people proving residency, owner occupied, et cetera, to qualify. So, we'd have to filter down to who qualifies and it'd be a value, a portion of that would be value. But this board could adopt those.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Would anyone else who has not yet been heard like to make a comment? Okay, with that, would anyone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close it.
Make a motion to close the hearing?
I'll second.
Thank you. The motion's been made by Mr. De Palma, seconded by Mrs. Mocelli. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for a roll call vote.
Frank West, yes.
William Mocelli, yes.
Kevin Kyra, yes.
Garrett Bunn, yes.
And Greg Bendel, yes. It is unanimous. The public hearing is now closed. And for the sake of your time, I would like to, if there's no objection from my colleagues, I would like to take Agenda Item Number Six. Excuse me. That's the next one. I'm getting ahead of myself. Excuse me. Would anyone like to offer a motion this evening that the board adopt the classification shift of a 1.75 as recommended by the Board of Assessors, which results in the minimum residential factor of .762331 for the fiscal year 2024?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The motion's been made by Mr. Kyra. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Mocelli. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Frank West, yes.
William Mocelli, yes.
Kevin Kyra, yes.
Garrett Bunn, yes.
And Greg Bendel, yes. It is unanimous. Thank you both so much for your-
Thank you, guys.
And can I just note that, really appreciate your offices being so open to questions and comments throughout the week. I know you get a lot of visitors and phone calls and I appreciate answering those questions. I'm sure that will continue, especially after a presentation as informative as and important as you have just given us.
Yes, thank you.
And we'd like to refer to the website.
Correct. As Mr. Perry has mentioned, there's quite a bit of information located on our website. But certainly we encourage all residents who have questions to reach out to Town Hall Monday through Friday. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Take care, guys.
Thank you. With that, I will apologize to our next appointment, which is with Daniel Trant, Senior Distribution Manager, Reading Municipal Light, for a public hearing on a request for Reading Municipal Light Department to locate one pole on Westdale Avenue. Sir, good evening and my apologies. We're running just a few minutes late.
Thank you very much for entertaining me time.
Thank you. And I have, is it Mr. Trant? Am I pronouncing that correct?
T-R-A-N-T, yep, Trant.
Thank you, sir. Good evening to you. We do have a public hearing and the same format here. I'm going to open it up to the board and to the audience, see who has questions, and then we'll take a vote. If that's okay with you?
Perfect.
Great. First thing we'll do is would anybody like to make a motion to open this public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. West.
Poor Gary.
This is a less than his delay.
We'll let Gary close it.
And is there any discussion?
For the next one already.
Okay, duly noted. Thank you. A roll call vote, please, on Mr. Kyra's motion.
Frank West, yes.
William Mocelli, yes.
Kevin Kyra, yes.
Garrett Bunn, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes. The public hearing is now open. Mr. Durant, thank you so much for being here and the floor is yours.
Yeah, on Westdale Avenue, we'd like to locate a solely-owned utility pole labeled W/61A/5, approximately 70 feet southeasterly from the existing utility pole, W/61A/4, Westdale Ave. What this pole will do will be serving a residential home that was recently constructed, eliminating a illegal trespass from house number 39. As well as, once the pole gets situated, we'll remove a guy wire going to a tree. So, we'll clean up two situations with one pole and it'll be out in the public way.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues, see if there's any comments or questions from the board.
Mr. Chair, my usual question, I heard you say it's going to be in the public way. What does that mean? Is it going to be in the sidewalk?
It's gonna-
Or is it going to be outside the sidewalk? Because I'm not a big fan of-
Yeah, it's going to be located in the same proximity of where the existing pole is located, in a straight line going down. Currently, there's no sidewalks out there, but it's going to be in the public way. There is no sidewalk.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just wanted to-
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Is this pole already up?
No, it's not.
Thank you.
Okay. We have some recommendations?
I do. Mr. Paul Looney, Town Engineer, has no concerns or comments on this issue.
Great, thank you for that. All right, at this time, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward, make a comment regarding this specific agenda. Sir, if you could just state your name and address for the record?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to remain anonymous, like I said before.
Thank you, Mr. Anonymous.
Thank you. Mr. Trant, thank you for being here. Concerning the poles that are in the sidewalk areas around town, if somebody on a bike or somebody was able, was involved in being injured hitting one of those poles, who assumes the liability for an accident like that?
If you feel like you can answer that. If not, you don't, okay.
Okay, and would you be able to tell us how much it costs to actually move a pole?
Tens of thousands of dollars because of three utilities being attached.
Tens of thousands of dollars?
Yes, exactly. The total cost, when you factor in Verizon, Comcast, and Reading Municipal Light, the large cost will be Verizon with their trunk lines, fiber optics specifically.
Okay.
So, that pole, the pole cost could run in the tens of thousands of dollars.
Okay, and I don't want to keep it too long, but I was wondering if it would be possible for you to relay that question back to Reading Light as to who has the liability for somebody being injured by hitting a pole that's in the middle of the sidewalk? And get back to the town. Mr. Bendel, maybe you can direct it to Mr. Bendel and he could share that information with the town in the next meeting?
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard on this particular matter? Hearing none. We will move to close this public hearing. Is there a motion, Mr. De Palma?
I make a motion that we close this hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Mr. De Palma, seconded by Mrs. Mocelli. Is there discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for a roll call vote.
Frank West, yes.
William Mocelli, yes.
Kevin Kyra, yes.
Garrett Bunn, yes.
And Greg Bendel, yes. It's unanimous. The public hearing's now closed and if there's no objection at this point, we'll take Item Number Six out of order, which is a request of Reading Municipal Light Department to locate one pole on Westdale Avenue. Is there a motion?
Sure.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for a roll call vote.
Frank West, yes.
William Mocelli, yes.
Kevin Kyra, yes.
Garrett Bunn, yes.
And Greg Bendel, yes. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for your time and for your patience. Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience and have a good evening. Okay. Next up, my pleasure to welcome to the table Ms. Ann Murray regarding Hero's Christmas Tree.
She's also a military mom.
Hi. Thank you so much, both of you, for being here. Welcome.
Thank you. Nice thanks for having me.
It's my understanding you have a wonderful idea you want to share with the community. I know you've probably been in touch with Mr. Semagley in his office, Ms. Mann. And so, we really look forward to hearing it and we've had a chance to read the memo. But for those who have not and those at home, do you mind sharing with us this wonderful idea you have for us?
My name's Ann Murray. I'm a resident of Wilmington and a Blue Star mother, which is a mother of a military member. In my case, it's my son Jonathan, who is a sergeant and crew chief at Fort Campbell in Tennessee. In 2006, the Blue Star Mothers of the New Hampshire Branch, which I belong to, started the yearly tradition of establishing the Hero's Tree. Town buildings and area businesses allow these trees to be displayed in their spaces. It's a way of honoring and remembering our family members and friends currently serving or that have served during the holiday season. We supply the tree and the decorations. We also encourage the townspeople to add a name of a loved one serving or a veteran to the tree. Our troops have expressed their appreciation for the honor of being remembered in this way during the holiday season. For more information, I have some information sheets explaining the Hero's Trees and our organization. Blue stars are for active military or veterans. Sorry, I'm nervous. Gold stars are for those military that have made the ultimate sacrifice and lost their lives and their freedoms for ours. Black stars are for the POWs and MIAs. As any military family knows, the holidays can be a very difficult time as many are serving in other states or deployed overseas. This is a way the town of Wilmington can come together and remember the sacrifices these heroes are all making to keep our country safe and free. I'm asking the board tonight for approval to display the tree in the Town Hall for the month of December. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think this is just a wonderful idea. If I had to guess, my colleagues probably feel the same way. I'm sure we'll hear from them in just a moment. But thank you so much for bringing this forward and what a great tribute to everyone who's serving. I'm so lucky to know your son JT and call him a friend and just so grateful for his service as we all are. But at this time, if anybody up here would like to make a comment, have a question?
Yes, please. Thank you. This is wonderful. I'm slightly surprised we haven't done this already with all the stuff we do in Wilmington for, you know, our deployed and our veterans and stuff, but I think this is wonderful and I think we should, I certainly stand behind it and I hope that this is going to become another tradition in this town. So, thank you for bringing it forth and, you know, God bless your children and your family. So, I appreciate it.
We also have blank stars for any town member that would like to come and hang their family member's name on the tree.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. West?
I concur with specifically with Ms. Mocelli and also Selectman Bendel. I think it's a great idea and it's a way to kind of have our deployed soldiers- I think it's a great idea, and it's a way to kind of have our deployed soldiers home. And it's something, even if it's just a name on a tree, but it's a name at Town Hall on a Wilmington tree. So I think that's a fantastic idea, and totally support. I'm just trying to think of where it could be placed that would be, I don't know if you, have you guys have a location that really would stand out when you walk in? Yeah, we did, there was a couple places, depending on how big the tree is, obviously right where the Toys for Tots boxes moved to the side would be nice, right in the middle there, without blocking too much of the screen. Or right in front of the office where the flag drop-off box is. There might be room in there. I know we still use that office, but depending on the size of the tree, I think we'll be able to accommodate it. Yeah. No, I think it's fantastic, I think it's a fantastic idea. Appreciate you bringing it up to us.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Kyrie?
I totally agree with my colleagues. I am very much in support of this. Just a wonderful tribute to the veterans and to those that are no longer with us. I do have one question, though.
Sure.
And I don't know if town manager needs to find out. Would this be a real tree or an artificial tree?
It's a fake tree.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I didn't know if we could have real trees in the-
Yeah, no, it's an artificial. I believe it's six or seven feet.
Great.
Okay, six.
Yep. Wonderful.
Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kyrie?
No.
Questions or comments?
Edward?
Mr. DePalma?
It's a long time coming. It's surprising that it hasn't happened before. What a great way for someone to put their name, put a name on it. And they smile. It's the holidays. Christmas trees are a big part, part of America, and we should plaster names all over them just to thank everyone. And I support this 100%, and I don't believe you have to go any farther with it. Just congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DePalma. And so, thank you again. We're going to call for the vote in just a second. It's Mrs. Woods, is that correct?
Yes.
I just wanted to give you the opportunity to say hello, perhaps brag about your loved one if you'd like to. We love you.
My son, also friends with JT, is in the Air Force. He's a power rescue jumper, and he was-
Wow.
-deployed last, for eight months, through all the holidays last year, but he is not deployed right now, but he won't be home again this year, so it's a nice, you know, we did the care packages. It's just a nice way to make them feel like they're with us. And I know they appreciate it, because I did talk to my son, and he thought that was a great idea, so.
Thank you very much for sharing that, and my hope is that this will be presented with great pride, and hopefully we'll be able to bring you some comfort when you see that and you see the way that the town embraces it, so thank you so much. It's just a wonderful idea. If there's no objection, I'd like to take agenda item number seven out of order. Hearing no objection. Would anyone like to offer a motion to grant the request of Ms. Ann Murray to place a Hero's Christmas Tree in Town Hall during the month of December 2023?
Sure.
Oh.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Fighting for it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a roll call vote.
Frank West, yes?
Lilian Maselli, yes.
Kevin Kyrie, yes?
Garrett Bunn, yes?
Greg Bendel, yes. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, and tell your sons, thanks for the service.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's great. Moving right along, our final appointment. Our apologies again, just a few minutes late. We'd like to welcome no stranger to this room here, Ms. West, regarding the Toys for Tots program. Mrs. West, good evening.
Good evening.
And if you could, don't mind introducing your guest, or have your guest introduce himself?
Yes, my name is Karen West, and I am, I with my husband Frank, are zone managers for the town of Wilmington and Tewksbury, and this is Staff Sergeant Short, who runs the program in our area.
Good evening, Sergeant Short.
Good evening, everyone. So this year is the 76th year of the Marine Corps Toys for Tots Program. I am the coordinator for Middle, Sixth, and Essex Counties. It's a pleasure to work with Frank and Karen again. I don't have specific numbers for what Wilmington itself pulled in last year, but the program in its entirety had 120,000 toys passed through our warehouse-
Wow.
-out to about 80,000 children, who are in desperate need of assistance for the year. I'm here to present a commander's award. Karen would like to say a few things.
Couple of things before that. Again, Frank and I have been doing this for the past 27 years. I would like to again thank the town manager, the acting town manager, Lucem Aglia, and the school superintendent, Mr. Brant, for allowing boxes to be placed here at the Town Hall and the senior center, as well as the high school and the Beltwell School. There are numerous other boxes throughout town as well, so if you can't make it during business hours, there are boxes at Reading Cooperative Banks, several banks in town. Market Basket is a huge place that you could go to, Esposito's, many, many different places. I wanted to let you know that we also have two events that we're going to be holding at West Real Estate at 386 Main Street here in Wilmington. On Friday, December 15th, we have a surprise guest. We have Santa Claus coming. All right? He's going to be coming from 5:00 to 8:00, and he's coming with Mrs. Claus. And you can get a picture, you can see Santa Claus, and all we ask for is an unwrapped toy or a donation to the Toys for Tots program. On Sunday, December 17th, from 11:00 to 1:00, we're going to have professional wrestlers come in from Lucky Pro Wrestling, including the former WWE NXT wrestler Anthony Green, and Impact and TNA wrestler Alicia Edwards. And for a toy, you can get an autographed photo. Both events are going to have several raffle prizes to raise money. All proceeds go to Toys for Tots every dime. And there might be a little surprise coming up. We don't know yet, okay? If anyone has any questions, certainly feel free to give us a call, or if someone happens to have large donations that they need us to pick up, please call Frank or I at 978-658-1754. Before we present the certificate, do you guys have any questions of us?
First of all, thank you very much, Sergeant Short. Thank you for your service to our country and in regards to this initiative as well. Obviously, Karen, I want to thank you and your family for your many years of service. When it comes to this, it's been terrific work. I know it's human's work, it's a lot of work, but it's worth every second, I have to imagine. And I'm so glad that the community has embraced your efforts over the last years. I hope that will continue. Sounds like it will.
Without the efforts of the town, this wouldn't exist, so I'd like to thank the town as well.
I'll stop. Mr. West, something you want to add?
I'm sorry, sorry, what's your name again, please?
Fred.
Fred. No, I guess I'll, on a personal note, you know, we've been doing this for 27 years, and it's, you know, it's been, as you said, Greg, it's been a family tradition. I know our daughter's in Florida right now, but our son certainly helps out. We got a bunch of friends and other family members that we couldn't do it without, and, you know, basically what I say is, is that, you know, people thank us a lot and stuff, but the truth is, is that we put out a bunch of empty boxes, and somehow they get filled, so we're, you know, we're the ones that are just putting around empty boxes and lugging down, you know, tons of toys at the end of the program. But, you know, certainly thanks to Staff Sergeant for his service to our, to the military first and foremost, to be in a Marine, and also, you know, being the coordinator this year for the Toys for Tots program, and it's a pleasure working with you, and hopefully we work together for a couple of more years while, while you're still in the local area. But thank you, and thank you to the board for bringing this topic up.
Thank you again. Ms. Maselli?
I'll echo what has already been said. Thank you for your service, Sergeant Short, and to, you know, Karen and Frank. It may, you may just be putting out boxes, but somebody needs to take and do that, because if no one's putting out the boxes, then they're not going to get filled, you know? So take the credit, and I know you do it because you want to do it and you want to help. I know it's not about, you know, you, it's about doing it for the children. So I really appreciate that, and to be doing this for 27 years, I mean, that's amazing, amazing to volunteer for anything for that amount of time.
Thank you.
You know, it's, I, it's a lot of coordination and stuff, I'm sure, and, you know, a lot of outreach, and you're reaching out to businesses, so I appreciate you taking the time, and I know you both do a lot for this community outside of this, so I appreciate it. And, yeah, I just, I look forward to, you know, contributing and just seeing, you know, I agree with you, the community makes it happen, but, you know, so thank you. It's definitely a Wilmington initiative, but I appreciate the work that you guys do to make it happen.
Thank you. Mr. Kyrie?
Sergeant Short, thank you for your service and the amount of work and commitment and volunteerism that you put in for Toys for Tots. And to Karen and Frank, I know Frank said it's just lugging the stuff.
Yeah.
But it's really, it's a, it's a love of the community that you give back and what you're doing for the, for the children in the town of Wilmington and the surrounding communities.
If the town didn't help-
I want to thank you for that.
If the town didn't help, we would have nothing to love.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. I mean, thank you to the town and to the spirit of Christmas that fills this community in the month of December. And thank you for putting it together and seeing it through, so that the children have something to open on Christmas Eve or Christmas Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. DePalma?
Congratulations. When you sit back and you see what Wilmington does for young, old, middle, whatever age bracket, we can both lay heads up high and be proud. At this time, with the holidays coming up, what you're doing now, I believe is one of the most important things. You're giving children a chance, and it's a beautiful sight to see. Staff Sergeant, I commend you. Be proud. The West family. Words cannot describe how grateful I know I am and the community is for what you put out, especially on this. All you're doing is picking up boxes. You're picking up a lot of boxes. And they're not empty on it. And that just shows-
Heavy heavy hit.
-the passion that this town has. And I just want to thank you very, very much from the bottom of my heart for what you do at the discount a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DePalma, and I know you have a very important presentation you'd like to make, but I just want to, again, echo all the sentiments been made, and we really appreciate you giving back and giving us the opportunity to give back by placing the boxes around town.
Thank you.
With that-
All right, so I have a commander's award to present to the town of Wilmington, and I'll just read it off for you.
Please.
The U.S. Marine Corps Reserve is proud to recognize the town of Wilmington for outstanding support of the 2023 Marine Toys for Tots Program. Your generous contributions have enabled the Marine Corps to bring the joy of Christmas and send a message of hope to America's less fortunate children. It is signed by both myself and Lieutenant General Commander of Marine Forces Reserve out of New Orleans.
Thank you, and on behalf of Chairman, Mr. DePalma, and my colleagues and the nearly 23,000 people here, we thank you, and we'll accept it if that's okay. My colleagues want to join us for the traditional photo?
Okay, stand over by the screen.
Put your camera on.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Just a little thank you.
Mr. West.
Yeah, we hope to see everybody December 15th with Santa Claus, 5:00 to 8:00, and December 17th for the wrestlers.
Thank you again.
Thank you for allowing us the time to talk.
You're very welcome, thank you. Have a great evening.
You, too.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes appointments. We'll move into communications. Mr. Semaglia?
Mr. Temporary Chair? We got a memorandum-
Not here for a long time.
That's it, I hear you. Memorandum from the town clerk's office regarding the Community Letter of Support for Veterans Heritage Grant. And we're lucky enough to have the assistant town manager, excuse me, the assistant clerk here with us tonight, Megan, who has been very instrumental in getting this. If you would like to, maybe she would like to say a few words on this.
Of course, please. Feel free to come forward.
I'm sorry, I am completely disorganized.
It's all right, take your time. Thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for considering this. So, Mr. Temporary Chairman, Select Board, what we're doing is we are applying for a grant from the state. I'm never going to remember the thing, S-H-A-R-B. It is the state archives, and it is in support of veterans' stories and veterans' heritage and artifacts related to the veteran's experience. We are applying to- We are applying to have a volume of vital records, or death certificates, that range from 1940 to 1947. They include four death certificates of Wilmington residents and one Tewksbury resident who were killed overseas during World War II. These are the death certificates of, let's see, it's Joseph Link, of a carpenter's mate, second-class Joseph Link, Joseph Ring. He was attached to a Marine unit in Western Samoa when he was killed. It's a radio mate, second-class William Butterworth. He was on the USS Tonkston, which broke up when it ran aground off of Newfoundland. It was a, the Tonkston was a destroyer that was built in 1921, and it went, ran aground in 1942. She, there was over 100 casualties from that event. There were two ships that went down in the same storm. The last Wilmington resident in this book is Seaman Second Class Elmer Drew. He was the only 17-year-old killed in action from Wilmington. He died off of Omaha Beach. He was a member of the naval demolition, no, the naval, naval combat demolitions unit, which is now known as the Navy SEALs. He was on a, one of the boats, one of the landing craft when it was hit, and he, of course, had a lot of demolitions in his, in the boat. And then the final is Sergeant John Neal. He was a resident of Tewksbury, and he was attached to the 39th Infantry and was killed during a battle to secure a bridge. It was the very first river crossing across the Rhine. The reason that we have a resident of Tewksbury is because the remains, when they were shipped home, they were shipped back, once they left the port of entry in the U.S., they were shipped back by train. Wilmington's train station was the closest to the Tewksbury Cemetery, so they shipped it to Wilmington, so we have the death certificate, and so that we, the Tewksbury has the resident copy. So the reason that we are asking for this grant is, we have had a book similar to this restored before, only cost us about $800. But in this case, these are the earliest records, and at the time, nobody knew what to do with what's called a health permit marker. It's basically a sticker that was attached to the exterior shipping casket, and the stickers and the stickers are self-adhesive. And so when nobody's told you what to do with a health permit marker that's in, it's basically just authorization to issue a burial permit, the obvious thing to do is to stick it to the death certificate. To the front of the death certificate. Seaman Second Class Drew's death certificate is the only one that we haven't been able to peel it up. So it's gonna cost us approximately $4,000 to get it up. That does include, uh, so what we're also gonna be doing is taking digital images of all four death certificates, having them digitally cleaned up and making reference copies. Seaman Drew's, he is the only one that we're actually gonna be removing wholesale. The others, we're just going to leave, and hopefully someday down the line, there'll be a much less expensive and effective and safe, uh, method for removing them. So we're asking for a grant for half of that. It's a matching grant, so, but we do have an item in our budget in the 2025-26 budget, no, the 2024-25 budget, to do this work. So we're not asking for any additional money. This is money that's in our budget for next year. So we're just needed a letter of community support saying that you approve of this project and that you support the idea.
Well, thank you so much, Mrs. Jones, for jumping in here and filling us in on this. We really appreciate it. Sounds like a wonderful.
I had no prep.
I think you did excellent, and I appreciate you and your colleagues in the clerk's office, so I know I've been influential here. If it's okay with you, I'd like to turn to the board and see if we would be willing to, since you've been so patient here this evening, to take agenda item number nine out of order, which is to consider signing a community letter of support for the Veterans Heritage Grant. Anyone like to offer a motion?
I just wanted to offer a discussion first. Can I just appoint or make a motion, then second for discussion?
I think that would be appropriate.
Uh, make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second to his motion?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, Mr. West.
I just wanted to say, I know Megan showed me that book and showed me those particular certificates, and it's, uh, it's, it's part of our history, and I think it's great that, that, you know, you're taking the initiative to do that. You know, 'cause these are, you know, these are Wilmington residents, you know, and one Tewksbury resident, but, you know, these are our, our soldiers. So sailors.
There's three sailors, one soldier.
But you know where I'm coming from. I mean, you know, any way we could, you know, preserve their memory in some fashion, you know, I'm all for it. So I think it's great that you're, you're wanting to do that, because those books have been around for many years, and like you said, you showed me the, the certificates with the stickers on them and stuff like that. You know, it's just for historical reasons, you'd wanna be able to reference back to that for some reason. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I only have one thing to offer. Thank you again for bringing this up, and you mentioned Elmer Drew, so glad you did. Lou may recall.
His, his mother was one of the first female Board of Selectmen members. But I, if I may, Mr. Chair, um, the, the compassion and the passion that Megan has done to this project has been amazing, and I too have asked her to take me into the safe to show me what was going on, and the way they did it back in the day is they put that sticker on there. So it is historical documents that obviously I'm kinda biased to, but it's all our history, and it's our, the young men that died serving their country at that time. So I appreciate the work that you're putting into this, and I'm looking forward to see the outcome.
Me too. Yeah.
And, and Megan, you might be, uh, glad to hear that, uh, it is my understanding that Elmer Drew has yet to receive, he is eligible, I believe, for a high school diploma from Wilmington High School. So I have expressed that, uh, to Dr. Brand, and we've talked about that, and I'm hoping that at some point, Elmer Drew's family, at this point, would be awarded the diploma that I believe he's earned. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay.
If you are in contact with the family, again, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, in Massachusetts, if you left high school to join the military, you are eligible for your high school diploma.
Okay.
And he is. And it would be very nice to, we've gotten quite a few of them now, but it would be nice to, if the family would like to receive his high school.
Okay.
Just as a side note.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Frank West, yes.
William Maselli, yes.
Kevin Kyra, yes.
Gary Bunn, yes.
And Greg Bendel, yes. It is unanimous for a, uh, Community Letter of Support for the Veterans Heritage Grant. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your efforts. Have a great night.
Mr. Chairman, back to communications. There's a notice from the United States Department of Transportation. Federal Aviation Administration, reason the public notice of availability, FAA instrument flight procedures, low-level helicopter system to support helicopter air ambulance, operation final environmental assessment, finding of no significant impact, and record of decision.
Thank you.
Board to consider six, we already did seven.
We have correspondence from Kerry Morris.
I'm sorry, I missed.
Comcast.
Oh, I'm sorry. Correspondence from Kerry Morris, Senior Manager, Government Affairs of Comcast, reason programming advisory and price changes.
Thank you ver, thank you very much. As you all know, we have taken up Board to Consider items six, seven, and nine, leaving us with number eight.
Board to consider amending flag policy for the town of Wilmington to include memorial, memorial library flag at Wilmington Memorial Library and the Purple Heart flag. Um, as you know, Mr. Chair, last meeting, um, you voted to put in a flag policy for the town of Wilmington, um, and we have been contacted by the Wilmington Library that they do have their own flag, that they do fly, and of course, the Purple Heart flag is also a federal flag.
So it sounds like these two have just, uh, been omitted, and we're looking to clarify and rectify that this evening.
Correct.
Anybody like to offer a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Kyra, seconded by Mrs. Maselli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a roll call vote.
Frank West, yes.
William Maselli, yes.
Kevin Kyra, yes.
Gary Bunn, yes.
And Greg Bendel, yes. It is unanimous. Thank you. And number 10.
Board to consider establishing a town building repurposing committee to evaluate possible reuse or disposition of vacated buildings.
Thank you. And Mr. De Palma, I'm gonna turn to you in just a second, if that's okay. Obviously, uh, the, the chairman put this, uh, put this agenda for us, and I'm just relaying the information here this evening. Uh, Mr. De Palma, I read this as, uh, a board to consider, yea or nay, in the development of this committee? Is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, okay. With that said, thank you for that clarification. Would anybody here like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept it.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Bendel.
Mr. Kyra?
Yeah, I appreciate the, um, this, um, board to consider item, but I, I'm just curious, is it ultimately up to the members of the Board of Selectmen and women, or Select Board, people, I don't know, anyone, um, to make the decision on, on these buildings? I mean, are, I mean, are you looking for a committee to make a proposal to the members of the board? Is that your intention here? Uh, I, you know, I don't, you know, who has that responsibility, um, over these? You, you named four specific buildings, these four vacant buildings. Or is it, you know, a town hall? I mean, a, a town meeting, um, determination as to what happens here, or I just don't know the process.
Mr. De Palma?
Okay, thank you. The way I've seen it, spoken to people on it, this committee, this, this subcommittee would review any of our, uh, existing empty or going to be empty buildings. To start out with, one, the cost of keeping these buildings, uh, running when they're empty is very expensive. Our insurance goes up, I, from what I've understood, our insurance could possibly double on each building. Uh, we have to keep them, uh, heated and maintained, uh, and if we have no purpose for it, why are we keeping it? And I, I believe that if we can form a committee that can review and present to us what their recommendations would be to, uh, form these buildings, it would move the process along a lot, a lot faster. I don't wanna see the town, uh, all of a sudden having all these buildings, uh, that are empty, and more is a considerable role now, and there more than likely will be more. But if we knew what we were going to do with them, uh, by recommendations of a committee, committee stating that these building, this building A, uh, is, uh, in serious need, a major, uh, work on to it, uh, and we, we see what it would cost the town to, uh, repurpose the building into something we could use, uh, you know, if it's worth it. I hate to see us invest a lot of money into a building, uh, that has a very, very, very short, uh, life expectancy. And I believe that if we, if we put together a committee of, uh, someone from the Historical Society, uh, uh, Building Department, someone from our board, uh, and, and some residents, they can look at these and they can attack the problem, and then they can present it to us and say, and say to us, uh, due to the age of this building, the cost to rehab the facility, or, to be honest with you, we have no use for it. We don't know. And, uh, I know someone's probably gonna make a comment that, well, we can always use an extra building, uh, but is it worth it? And I feel that if we get a little jumpstart on this, we'll know where we are gonna be sitting with these buildings. The building you're sitting in right now, what are we gonna do with it? Is it worth doing anything to it? But the thing is, is if we know in advance, and we, we're able to say, this building, we, we can't repurpose it, it's, the, the cost is, you know, or, yeah, we can still use this building, and, uh, we would know in advance, instead of hitting this, uh, we know what these buildings are gonna entail. So I, I just feel that it would be very, very good, no, no cost to the town, uh, that we have a group of people that are sitting there and reviewing them.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. De Palma. Mrs. Maselli?
Yeah. I, I think it's a good idea, Gary. I guess I, I just liked some more, uh, clarification. I understand the concept, so you're looking for more kind of like an advisory committee, correct?
Yeah, it's all it is, is an advisory committee.
So, I mean, I do, yeah, sorry, I do think, which I know you mentioned, I think, you know, um, you know, the town departments, the property departments need to be on this committee, um, first. I think they need the buy-in first. Like, right now, obviously, George Hooper, I know he's retiring, but, uh, you know, we need that, because, I mean, they're integral, you know, uh, you know, town engineer, you know, we need their buy-in, I think, on this first. But I think it's a good idea, 'cause I agree, we shouldn't have empty buildings that are gonna, you know, cost us money, or, you know, whatever. I think we need to figure that out. I'm all for it. But I think we need to put a little, um, just cadence around it first, on what the committee will be made up for, up of, and their, what was that? Then, yeah, how, the number, and what their purpose is. So I wonder if maybe we could, you know, come up with a proposal of, you know, kind of what their mission would be, um, and who should be made up on it, of, on the committee. Sorry, I can't talk here. Just before we move forward with it, I'd just like to see it come together, before just putting a committee together, I think I'd just like to have a little more dialogue on, and more buy-in from the people that we'd like, you know, to, to sit on this committee as far as department heads. Love the idea of bringing in residents to sit on this committee, um, you know, if, if we need a rep from this committee, whatever, but I, I don't know, I just feel like we need to put a little bit more together before doing it.
And just, just to, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Kyra?
Mr. Chair, just to go off of what Mrs. Maselli said, um, it makes, it makes sense when you say that we should look at certain department heads.
Yeah.
In addition to the, the building superintendent, what comes to mind is the building inspector.
Yeah, yeah.
The health department, you know, is the, even the, even the, uh, fire chief, uh, for safety purposes, uh, to do a first go-round.
Yeah. And, and like I said, I, I totally support it. I think it's a good thing, but I think we need to just make sure that the right people are involved and know that we're doing this first, so we don't, you know, ruffle any feathers, so to speak, and that they know that we'd like to put this advisory committee together, so that when this committee is formed, you know, and, and they come up with their first assessment, no one is kinda like, whoa, you know?
And then the makeup, uh, Mr. Chair, and then the makeup of the committee that you mentioned.
Yeah.
Typically, in the past, it's been one appointment from each member of the board, that would be five, and then, then you, then Mr. De Palma mentioned the Historical Commission, six, and the building superintendent would be seven. So you're at the odd number that you're looking for. Rather than, because who, who chooses the two individuals, uh, from Wilmington to serve on that board? I'm, I'm assuming that we would.
Yeah.
You know, but if five or six people put their name up, you know, are you, who, are you gonna pick it? At least if people come forward to us, we could say, oh, okay, you, I'll pick you, yeah.
So if I could just jump in here, I know a lot of good questions have been asked. Mr. De Palma, did you wanna chime in there?
Yes, I do. Just so you know, uh, I've had contact with the Historical Commission. They're very interested in it. Judge Hooper approached me regarding it, that he would love to be on it. I've had two residents, uh, contact me and said they'd love to be on it. You know, if, uh, I was looking at, you know, a small group of five, but if you wanna, you know, bring it up, that's fine, but I was looking at it too, that they can assess, what a building is by going, by getting in contact with, uh, the fire chief, uh, uh, health, uh, building department, and, uh, listen to them before they make a decision on what, what they are going to bring to the board. But it's, you know, yeah, again, it's, it's, it's up to the committee, uh, uh, the Select Board, uh, to make their decisions on, and I just, I just think it's, it's something that we should and must look into. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. De Palma. I, you know, I, for myself, just as one member here, um, I'm okay with supporting this. I just do, I do have two clarifying questions for you, Mr. De Palma, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, so first one is just, whatever the makeup of the group looks like, what, I'm sure will be determined by us, but is it safe to assume that they would be making a recommendation to us? So I'm just talking about the process here.
Yes.
Whatever work they do would be presented to this group to then make a, an informed decision on what the next move might be? Is that correct? Is that your?
Correct.
Okay. And secondly?
100% correct.
Okay, thank you. And secondly, kinda going back to my original question, was that, uh, this is, I see this as the first step, and that, yeah, yes or no, do we wanna form such a committee? And then, in my mind, correct me if I'm wrong, the next step would naturally be, what does that committee look like? Is that how you see it?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so.
Yeah, like I said, like I said, since I brought it up, uh, at our last meeting or previous meeting, uh, I have had, uh, contact with, uh, the Historical Building Department and a few residents that have said, gee, I'd love to do something like that, and would have the town that, you know, town's hot. So, uh, I just thought, I just thought I'd present it tonight and see where we can, how we can work this out.
Well, okay, so I just wanna be clear, because I wanna make sure, whatever message we're relaying to the community, uh, community tonight, is that if, based on what I'm hearing from you, if I'm listening at home, I might say to myself, well, I'm not gonna apply, 'cause it sounds like the chairman's already talked to a few people, uh, and they're in, so this is signed, sealed. I just wanna be clear, that's not the case, right?
No, it's not. I have, I have not approached anyone. I've been approached.
Okay. I think that's important, so thank you, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I have been approached, and that's it. I haven't gone out, I don't, I didn't feel it was my position. I know when I did speak to one individual, uh, and he advised me that he'd be very interested in it. You know, I told him, I said, that, we keep his name, uh, you know, we'll, we'll make sure that, you know, he's presented to the committee, the board, to agree or disagree on his name.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Mr. West?
Uh, we probably need some sort of budget for this committee, if and nothing else, to have a recording secretary. So I don't know where that money would come from.
Certainly, that is something to consider. That's an important factor.
Unless would you want the committee to be its own, and that's, you know, I, I kinda like when, when we have a, a professional recording secretary, especially when you're talking about the, you know, factoring in four different buildings and many different, you know, people are gonna miss things, where a, where a recording secretary is probably not, not as likely to, to miss what the minutes should look like.
That's a good point, and I, if I had to guess, this, this committee would be on track, not, probably not to be formed anytime in the near future, but may take a few weeks. We might have to, uh, create how the committee, uh, what the committee looks like. We'd have to ask people, they would have to commit. It could take some time, perhaps something like that could be considered in the upcoming budget. I won't put you on the spot here, Lou, uh, but.
No, and, and, yeah, so I just had.
No, and, and, yeah, so, I just have a question, like, so what are we voting on tonight?
It sounds, I, my understanding, if Mr. De Palma can correct me if I'm wrong, we are, they're voting on yes or no, would you like to form a committee? We don't know the makeup of the committee yet, and we don't have a charge for the committee, but do you wanna have a committee, uh, to evaluate possible reuse and disposition of vacated buildings?
Correct.
So, so maybe you'd be looking for a motion to accept the, uh, concept of a?
Yes.
Town building, uh, repurposing committee with the, uh, makeup to be, um, at a future, at a future meeting, with the makeup at a future meeting? Because I, I, you know, I, my, let me just throw that out.
No, I, and that sounds good to me, I just wanna, I'm being mindful here, I hope everyone can appreciate, I didn't, I wanna be mindful and respectful to our chair, who put the agenda together.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, and we do have a motion?
Motion to accept the concept.
We do have a motion already laid on the floor, we're under the discussion.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, forgive me, we've gone, uh, astray here. It was, uh, I believe it was Mr. West made the, uh, excuse me, Mr. De Palma made the motion.
Motion, Mr. West, yeah.
And the second to my left.
So do you wanna have Mr. De Palma rescind his motion?
If, maybe he wants to, uh, amend or refrain, repeat for the benefit of all of us, Mr. De Palma, your motion?
Okay, uh, I would correct my motion by saying, uh, looking for a motion to, uh, create a, uh, building repurposing committee. And, uh, for size and participants, it, uh, should be determined at a later date.
Okay, and is there a second to that? Thank you, Mr. West, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a roll call vote.
Frank West, yes?
William Muselli, yes.
Kevin Kyrie, yes?
Garrett De Palma, yes?
And Greg Bendel, yes, it is unanimous. Thank you. And finally, Mr. Semaglia, final board to consider item.
Okay, board to consider, request of Kimberly Lovell, Wilmington High School Field Hockey, to conduct a fundraising, fundraising car wash at the Public Buildings Department on Sunday, August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, from nine AM to one PM.
Just your motion. Thank you, Mr. Kira, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mrs. Muselli, any discussion?
Just a quick discussion?
Mr. West?
Is there any issue with any construction? No, this, this would be, this would have nothing to do with any of the town hall construction or any construction.
No, no, this is, this is gonna be at the public.
This is at a different location.
And, and, and just so you know, uh, through a follow-up email, they have been instructed to contact the masons, just in case they have an event.
Okay.
Where they might have to park off to the side.
No problem, I just wanted to, just wanted to make sure that we're clear.
Thank you for the clarification. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Frank West, yes?
William Muselli, yes.
Kevin Kyrie, yes?
Garrett De Palma, yes?
And Greg Bendel, yes, it is unanimous, thank you. And now on to public comments. Sir, if you can name your, uh, state your name and address, please, for the record.
I believe I stated earlier, I like to remain anonymous.
Okay.
And I'm not looking to be mocked or mock anybody, so appreciate if you'd, um, respect that. Some people had some questions they asked me to ask tonight. I have some comments, but before I make my comments, I'd just like to ask a, a question. Mr. Kira, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that you're a member of the Town Hall Building Committee?
Uh, sir, if I would just remind you, if you could kindly, uh, direct any questions through the chair.
Uh, Mr. Bendel?
Sure.
Could you ask Mr. Ky, Kira the question that I just asked?
Sorry, I missed it, could you repeat your question?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but is Mr. Kira a member of the Town Hall Building Committee?
Mr. Chair?
Kira?
Mr. McDonald, is it? It's Ms. McDonald, correct? Yes, I'm a member of the Town Hall, uh, School Administration.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the questions that I asked, I wasn't putting you on the spot if you, if you weren't on that committee. The concern was that, um, the area where the town hall is proposed to be built on, it has a high water table, and the Swain School is getting water in the basement, and a septic system has to be four feet above the water table. And so, that means that the grade would have to be built up, and it was, um, stated that that town hall was gonna be hooked up to sewer, is that correct?
It was, it was looked at to be hooked up to sewer, but I don't know that that's going to take place. But let me just give you, um, some options here, um, because I know you asked that question at a prior meeting, and it was answered by, uh, our OPM, Mr. Pilota.
Correct.
Right? So, so you have the answer to that question.
Uh, but there's been some developing information.
So just let me just say this to you, that on, uh, Wednesday, December sixth, there is a Town Hall School Administration Building Committee, so I would suggest that instead of just throwing out a bomb to try to get no answer, you come to that meeting and you'll get your answers. Because there you'll have the general contractor, you'll have the OPM, and you'll have a full committee that will be able to answer those questions for you.
Thank you for that information.
Okay.
I'm not looking to throw a bomb out. What I am interested in doing is sharing some information with the board, because I believe money is being spent on that project already, and the, I, I don't know if it's gone out for bonding yet, has it gone out, uh, for bonding yet, Mr. Kira?
I don't know.
Okay. Uh, that's the concern, because, um, there seems to be an issue that has arisen relative to the sewer line, and it was brought to my attention that the Wilmington High School is on a forced sewer main, and nobody else is allowed to tie into that, that forced sewer main, and there've been other residents there who have, um, tried to tie into it, and they were denied. So, if the town is spending money, and they don't, and they're thinking that they're gonna be able to tie into that main, and they're not allowed to, number one, there's no permit yet, because there's no septic system permit, because they were told that it was gonna be hooked into sewer, as you stated, that I got my answer before, that it was, there was a sewer main in the area. However, what was not stated was that sewer main was a forced main, and no one else is able to tie into that. So that's a concern. The other concern is, um, there was been, there's been a house that's been built beside town property recently, where you saw, they have a raised septic system. And we've been told that we weren't gonna lose any parking places, there's gonna be the front and the fourth, uh, able to function there, and, and the parking's not gonna be a problem. So, if you're spending money, you don't have a permit, you're going off for bonding, I don't know how you can go off for bonding without a building permit. And if you need a building permit, you would need to have a septic permit, but we're told that it was gonna be on sewer, so it seems to be a little bit of a problem. So I know you're not, you're not gonna answer that tonight, but maybe you can get that answer for us and come back to us next meeting. Not for me, 'cause it's really not about me, it's about the public, right? So the public would like to know what's going on with that, and?
Thank you for that comment, we'll certainly take it under advisement.
Who, who would be advising you on that, Mr. Bendel?
So we'll take it under advisement.
Okay, all right. And so, uh, Mr. Bendel, uh, this question is for you, I have a question for Mr. Bendel, but, um, when you pledge allegiance, and you're pledging, you know, liberty and justice for all, um, do you feel as though the Board of Selectmen is your own private club?
Thank you for your comment, we'll certainly take it under advisement.
Because, last week I asked for the, um, the warrant amounts, this week I asked for the warrant amounts, and you, um, don't seem to wanna share that. So, the question I have for Mr. De Palma is, Mr. De Palma, last week I asked you for the, uh, total amount of the warrants, um, I also asked you if, um, you have any plans on putting on the agenda, um, a fireman or police officer who will be on-site when the fuel tanks are being filled up? So if there is a spill, it could be, the driver could be notified, or there could be witnesses if there's a liability issue. So my question, Mr. De Palma, is, were you able to get the answer for what the warrant amount was, uh, voted on last week? The last meeting, sorry. Can you hear me, Mr. De Palma?
Yes, I can.
Do you have the warrant amounts for last week?
No, I don't.
Do you, have you made a decision, have you done anything with offering to the board in terms of an item put on the agenda relative to, um, people being on-site when fuel tanks are being filled up? Have you done any?
No, I don't think it's worth it.
Okay, all right, so, my, my question to you?
Excuse me, I don't wanna interrupt you, but I just do, I wanna mention, we may have other people who would like to speak, so I just wanted to interject that.
Okay, uh, um, my question to Mr. De Palma is, Mr. De Palma, I know that you've been the, um, the chair of the Democratic Committee, are you too busy campaigning for President Biden to get us answers to questions like this?
Okay, thank you for your questions and comments, we'll take them under advisement. Anyone else like to be heard? Sir, if you could just state your name and address for the records, please.
Steven Turner, fifty-nine Washington Avenue, uh, just did wanna talk about the last item we had on the agenda prior to this. I do think it's a fantastic idea to have the Building Repurposing Committee. Been here long enough to have seen a few buildings that could have been repurposed and might have had a second purpose, but we didn't maintain them because of the cost, and then we lost them, some of them might have been historic as well, so I'm very, very happy to hear that we're being proactive now, and looking forward with these buildings, and some of them we may not keep, they may not be worth it, but if we can, and if they're a good purpose, fantastic, thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else who's not yet been heard? Okay, we'll move on to announcements, would anybody have any announcements? I just have one, if I may, and I want to just, uh, let, uh, the committee at large know that we, uh, the search committee for the new town manager had a meeting last week, uh, I thought was very productive, did have a chance to watch the meeting, uh, with the search firm headed up by Mr. Lynch, I thought the meeting was very productive, I feel like they're moving in the right direction. Uh, we have hired, uh, a search firm, and, uh, Paradigm, and they will be underway, they estimate that the entire search, uh, like the period of time, maybe about fifteen weeks, give or take, with the holidays coming up, um, so that people can kind of anticipate what to expect, but I appreciate everybody on the search committee's efforts, I believe they're meeting again on December twenty-first.
Correct, room nine, seven PM.
And that'll be live on WCTV as well. So wanted to give an update on that, and certainly that process is underway, and I feel like it's in good hands. Any other announcements? Hearing none, is there any new business? There's no new business?
Just tell, excuse me, I just have a question. The, uh, minutes for the executive session that we, that was with Mr. Hooper and Mr. Semaglia, and the whole, the whole town manager search, or, or acting town manager search is over, but we've yet to see minutes, and I was just, I was hoping that we would have seen minutes for, recently, but I don't know what, if you guys have a plan to get those written? Those were the executive session minutes for, uh, when, uh, two of the selectmen negotiated your contract and worked with Mr. Hooper to try to re, uh, uh, put in that contract.
Yeah, Mr. Bendel, I, I think Mr. West brought this up at the last meeting, and I'm sure if we don't get the minutes to him by next meeting, he'll ask again, and again, and again, and keep calling it out. Uh, we just received minutes from twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, uh, Mr. West. Uh, the minutes will be done, and they'll be in your hands as soon as possible.
Okay, it's just, you know, we've had the issue, the issue's been resolved, so it'd be nice to have the minutes in hand, 'cause we haven't gotten any regular minutes since August, with the exception of these minutes that we just got in October, so we're still, we're still missing regular meeting minutes as well. I just wanted to get us caught up, that's all.
Mr. West, thank you, I'll just turn to our chairman, Mr. De Palma, I just wanna make sure you heard that Mr. West had an item that he brought up not reasonably anticipated within forty-eight hours advance of the meeting. Did you hear his question, Mr. De Palma?
Yes, I did.
Okay, just, just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Any other new business? Not reasonably anticipated by the chair forty-eight hours in advance? Okay, important dates, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, November twenty-seventh, curbside collection of yard side waste to December first, November twenty-ninth, brush drop-off Old Main Street, eight AM to twelve PM, December first, Festival of Trees, St. Dorothy's Church, lower level, ten AM to nine PM, December second, brush drop-off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM, December second, Christmas tree lighting, Town Common at four PM. I have it under good authority that Santa will be there. December second, Festival of Trees, St. Dorothy's Church, lower level, nine AM to nine PM, December third, Santa Parade, eight-thirty AM, December third is the Festival of Trees, St. Dorothy's Church, lower level, eleven AM to two PM, December third, Holiday Social at the Hardin Tavern, one PM to four PM, December fourth to the eighth, curbside collection of yard waste, December seventh, Santa's Workshop, Town Hall, room nine, six PM to seven-thirty PM, December eleventh, Select Board, Town Hall, room nine, seven PM, and as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, December twenty-first is, first is the Town Manager Screening Committee, room nine, seven PM.
Thank you, Mr. Semaglia. Finally, this evening, we have our salute to service, and on behalf of the board, it's my privilege to present tonight's salute to service to Corporal Richard McHugh of the United States Army, born in Woburn in April of nineteen thirty-three. Mr. McHugh passed away just last week, November twenty-third, he lived in Wilmington on Church Street for many years. Mr. McHugh, McHugh served during the Korean War era, entered the United States Army on April twenty-first, nineteen fifty-three, from Boston, Massachusetts. He was stationed in, uh, Germany with the three hundred and eighty-fifth, uh, uh, infantry. He left service on March nineteenth of nineteen fifty-five, out of New Jersey. During his time, he was awarded an Army Occupation Medal in Germany, a Good Conduct Medal, and a National Defense Medal. A longtime resident of Wilmington, him and his late, late wife, Maureen, raised three sons and a daughter, uh, and were grandparents to nine here in Wilmington. His services will be held later this week at Nichols Funeral Home, but we thank him for his service and his family, and we salute him tonight. Thank you very much. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. West, seconded by Mrs. Muselli. Roll call vote, please.
Frank West, yes?
William Muselli, yes.
Kevin Kyrie, yes?
Garrett De Palma, yes?
And Greg Bendel, yes. Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
Thank you.